He he wore a wig because he had no hair anymore. He was very uh. People wanted him to see, so he was very like.
You felt for him?
No, I did not.
You did not feel for him?
No.
Okay, so you're having a hard time with your body, your shoulders are tense, your neck is tense.
Yeah.
Do you know why? Do you know what's going on? Anything comes to the fore?
Yeah, there is.
Okay, well, let's see where we go.
Yeah.
How can we help today? What is it that you need? Do you need structural? Do you need nutrition, energetics? Emotional, what a surprise. Acupuncture, just emotional. So we're gonna do some emotional work. Right now, what is your present level of ego soul integration? Are you above forty? Forty-one, forty-one, forty-one point one, forty-one point two. Forty-one point, forty-one point two. Is that correct? Have I made a mistake? No, forty-one point two, okay? Are you really and willing to go higher? Up to forty-two, forty-two point five, forty-two point six. What's holding you back from going up to forty-two point six? Is it above five, above six, above six point five? Um, six point six, six point, six point five. Okay? Which is victimized. Um. Secondaries, uh, first section, second section. Depressed, trapped, insecure, rejection. Um, worthless, lack of courage, a failure, unloved loneliness, fearful. Anything from the third, something from the fourth. False, resentful, frustr- frustration, arrogant vein, critical stack. And disdain, superiority, rage, unforgiving jealousy, envy. Hate, ranko and blame. I got all those right? So out of those, how do we start? With trapped rejection? Something else, rejection. Um, and is this all to do with the present? This is to do with your past, uh, childhood, a bit older. Fifteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-five, between twenty and twenty-five. Closer to twenty, closer to twenty-five, um. Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-three to twenty-four to twenty-five, ten on twenty-four. Closer to twenty-five, twenty-four and a half, a big closer to two. So we're talking about twenty-four and a half years old. So where are you when you're twenty-four and a half years old? Do you know? You look back?
Yeah, I'm in a relationship with uh, the father of my son. And.
What's his name?
Danny. Danny. Yeah.
Danny. It's nothing to do with him? So it's not to do with Danny?
Okay.
Uh, but you are in a relationship with him. Where are you living?
In Holland, in uh, um. Daiven.
Where?
Daiven, yeah, it's, it's. It's, it's called in English, it's Pijon, the place is, uh, yeah, pigeons. Translate, yeah, pigeon.
Pigeon. Yeah, pigeon, pigeon, a pigeon.
The place, the place called Pigeons.
Okay. So a place for pigeons. Is that apt? I think that's apt. I don't know why, but it's apt. Um. So you're in that place of pigeons, I'll just say it in English.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And yet it's got nothing. It's got nothing to do with your relationship.
Did it, uh, has it something?
Tell me about work. What you do, what you doing?
Work?
Does something to do with what? Say that, say what you were gonna say?
With my, with my paralyzed, uh, face.
You had a paralyzed face?
Yeah.
How did that happen?
Sorry?
How did that happen?
I don't know the reason. I, I was pregnant and at the last few weeks of my pregnancy. I uh, uh, woke up in the morning and my whole left side was paralyzed. So maybe, maybe there's a relation, relation.
So your, your child was already born?
No, uh, no.
So you were pregnant?
Actually was, is born in ninety-two, uh, that's how many years back, uh. Thirty, 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 twenty-one. Now it's, I'm, I'm very bad at, at.
No, it's, it's, no, it's, it's much later because ninety-two, that's eight plus twenty-three.
Okay.
That's thirty-one. Thirty-two. No, thirty-one. That would make it thirty-one, it's much later. Anyway, this is about work. This is about work. Uh. Not necessarily work, but it wasn't to do with your home. Um, were you still at school, college, were you studying?
No, I had, I had a job. I, uh, at that time, I worked. Um, at the office. And I wa- was working in many different, uh. In the same organization, I did different jobs. And I felt really, uh, happy with the work I did, so. I'm a little bit surprised about that it's related to my work.
Yeah, someone.
Maybe related to, yeah.
Something, something happened, okay? Something happened.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, with someone at work.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, someone in, in a position of authority over you.
Mm-hmm. Must be my, my boss.
Tell me, tell me about your boss. Is this a man or a woman?
A man.
It's not him? Hold on, is that right? No, okay, let me, let me take a step back.
Okay.
Okay, so it's to do with twenty-four years old and. It's not to do with their relationship, it is to do with work. And it is to do with your boss. And he's a man. That's quite not relevant in some odd way. But it is to do with your boss and it's to do with the guy. That you're thinking of. Um. Tell me, tell me about this. This boss of yours, this guy.
He's willing, uh, um, trying to control everyone and everything.
Not you, of course.
Sorry?
Not you, of course.
Uh, no, no, I didn't feel that way and when I felt it, I expressed it.
Okay.
So, and.
So that was a bit silly of me. That was a bit silly of me. Okay. Um. So he was, so he's a controlling person in his nature, but you did not feel controlled by him?
No. No.
Okay.
I, I felt I was able to speak up. He was very insecure. He, he wore a wig because he had no hair anymore. He was very, uh. People wanted him to see, so he was very like. Um, external, uh.
You felt for him?
No, I did not.
You did not feel for him?
No.
I don't mean in, in a loving, in a, as a, I don't mean as a lover or anything like that, but for the fact that he was putting a wig on.
I re- I rec- I recognized what he, what there was going on, but. Uh, not in a way I felt for him, no. I saw what.
How did you feel for him? You just swallowed that. You just, something went through your head and you just swallowed that. Go back, go back a second and just reflect on those last few men, that, that last minute. Because something went through your head.
I don't know.
You, you had some sort of memory just there for a second, but you've.
But not aware, an aware memory. I, I, there was no visual or, or words or something like.
Okay. So let's go back to him anyway. So. He's an insecure guy, he puts a wig on. But you have no empathy for him, no sympathy for him. So my question is, what do you feel for him? So when you see him in your mind's eye.
There's no feeling, there's, there's.
You don't like him, you don't dislike him, you've got no. So he's nothing to you?
I can say it's nothing. I don't, I don't know if that's the way I want to. Say this, it's nothing? Maybe? I don't know.
We're exploring bits which are not in your awareness.
Sorry?
So. We're exploring.
Mm-hmm.
Bits, issues, memories which are not in your awareness.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so you're not aware, what we're trying to get to is a place where. You will discover something that right now you've forgotten.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
But I assure you, it is about him.
Yeah.
And it is about how you feel about him. Which you don't. So you don't, you feel nothing, you feel nothing about him. Um. And that is not true, that is not accurate. You actually do have. There is something about him. So let's just focus on him for a minute, yeah?
Yeah.
So. Typical day. Share your interactions with him.
Um.
I'll tell you something about him. Because we've been here before. Because this is a, this is a ripple from past.
Yeah.
He's like your teacher. Your female teacher, your French teacher, he's like your French teacher.
Yeah.
There's a quality about him, he is like your French teacher.
Mm-hmm, I, I.
Look at the way he treats, look at the way he treats other people. The way you said, you know, he's controlling.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can you see that?
He's insecure, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. It's something about that. Um. So let's just, let's focus on that. Focus on. Your perception. As you see him. Being controlling with other people. With his, with his insecurity. Manifesting in that way. And. You see him as a failing. Although he's in a position of power. You are judging him.
Mm-hmm.
And. Just allow that, allow that. See he's, see the way he controls other people. And the way he attempts to control you. And you see him as that insecure person. But rather than empathy. You are judging him as failing. So you don't have respect for him. You don't respect him.
No.
Is that right?
Yeah.
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 So just keep focusing on that. Keep seeing him, telling people how to be, what to do. How he tries to tell you. But how you. From a lofty position of disdain. You look down on him. It's how you protect yourself. It's okay. You're protecting yourself. From this.
It feels like I'm not allowed to think and behave that way. I do not allow myself to have such. Kind of. Feelings.
This is the theme that's been running through your life every time we're done going back in your life. Is the theme of. Your need to stay alive. This is how you do it. This is that little bit within you of power. This is how you hang on. Through your superiority. That sense of superiority, yeah? And. It's been really, really useful. It's been really, really helpful. It's helped you to navigate your world. From these people that would devour you. Given have the chance, they would devour you. Because of their own ego needs. Yeah. So this is. It's useful to know this about yourself. This is how you protect yourself. But there's a price to be paid. Because it shuts off your heart.
Yeah.
And today. It is no longer useful. It has been useful and it has been important, but today, where you're at. It's no longer useful to you. As a. As a tactic, as a manipulation of the world, as a way to survive. You're so much more than that now.
Yeah.
Recognize that that part is still alive in you. It's still there in the background. Your mind. It's still. Dictating how you see others. There is that judgment. It gets in the way, it gets in your way of your heart.
Yeah.
See that.
Yeah. I know, it does, yeah.
Right, we don't need him anymore. We don't, we don't need this guy. You know, he's in the past, it's a memory and it's no longer relevant. However. Within you. I wanted to see that mind part of you. That little ego which is stuck in your past, which is stuck in your present. Which, it's running in the background, it's. It's a program that has outlived its function. Its usefulness. But it's still there. I'd like you to focus on your third chakra in your solar plexus. And I want to see that part of you, that mind, that judgmental part. And I want you to see it for what it is in context. I'd like you to see that it has outlived its usefulness, that it was really useful, it was really important for you. And. It still thinks that it's important.
Yeah, my. My whole body is resisting. There's, there's so much tension in all of my body if there's.
Okay.
Kind of.
All right, let's, let's pause there, let's pause there, let's pause. Focus on that tension, focus on the tension within you. And build it up. Build the tension. Don't try, don't try to shake it off. Focus, bring your whole attention, your focus into your body, into the tension. Find the center. Where is the center of the tension? And let it grow by focusing. On this part of your ego. That wants to survive, that wants to judge other people. That wants to stay in a place above your heart. Judgmental. And allow that, you know what? Be judgmental, you know, you're always judgmental. So be judgmental now deliberately. In yourself.
Yeah, but it's still.
Body, yeah.
Like my mind.
No, 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 don't talk, don't talk about it, go into it, just experience it. Just experience it. Experience the tension within your body, be in your body. And let that tension build up. All you have to do is listen to my words. Let the tension build up inside you. Notice where it is. If it's in your head, be curious. If the tension builds up in your head, let it. With the differences, you want to notice exactly where it is. Which bones, which muscles, which sides, which part? Curious, be really, really curious. This is inside you all the time, running out of awareness. Make it conscious, right now, be one with your tension. Build it up. Allow your judgmentalness to be there. Notice. How often you are judgmental with so many people in your life. In so many situations. There's always someone. Running there in the background. In different places, at work, in the streets, with friends, with yourself. There's always someone. Because that's how your judgmentalness stays alive. By criticizing. And you criticize yourself all the time. You're your number one subject. Let it, right now, let it, give it permission. Really criticize yourself, really put yourself down, a peg, two, three, four. Be the victim to yourself that you've always been. And within that, let your rebellion grow. You are not your mind. You will not put yourself down, you are more than this. Allow your tension to dissipate. And change your focus now. Change your focus to seeing yourself. As a, as a tragic comic figure. Laugh at yourself. Laugh at this. Mental attitude of yours. That is ridiculous. Because this is not who you are. It has outlived its usefulness. It was a ploy to survive. This is not who you are. And whenever this wordiness comes up within you to pull you down, just laugh. This is silly. This part of me is silly. This is silly. But laugh with compassion. Laugh at this part of you in your solar plexus with compassion. With understanding. See yourself as you truly are. You've done it? I wasn't sure where we were going, but you've done it. How's your tensions?
Much better. Much better. It's still in my body, but the intensity is less.
Okay, so go back into your body.
Mm-hmm.
And now. Focus. Or rather allow all the tensions of your body to come to the fore, wherever they are, but this time. Focus on them with acceptance. With joy from your heart. With, like, like you might do. With loving kindness with a cat or with a young lad or child, you know, male, female, it doesn't matter, just with a. With a baby, you know, like, they've been a little bit truantly like, but you understand them and so you. You give them a ruffle and, you know, it's okay because. You come from a place of understanding, from acceptance, you accept them as they are. So accept yourself as you are with all your tensions. And notice all those tensions, let them come to the fore, but with your heart, connect with your tension. And. Have that sense within yourself of. It's okay. Let go. And really notice the places where the tension are, the tensions are. As you connect.
Yeah.
And with your smile. Your laughter, your joy, your acceptance. You accept your tensions as they are and as you do so, they begin to melt. The more you accept them. The more you notice them. The more they release. Tensions are out of awareness. Disassociations from you. The more you connect with your tensions and associate with them. The more they release, the more they let go. Now breathe into your belly, you're breathing into your chest, breathe into your belly. From your belly, from your belly. Focus on any tensions which are left from your belly. And you breathe into them, let them breathe into you. Connect with your heart to every corner of your body, anywhere with a retention. With warmth. Let your warmth from your heart permeate throughout your body. So that you begin to sizzle with joy. And wherever you find tension. There is your focus. There is your joy and your laughter. There is your joy and your laughter and your acceptance. Okay?
Yeah.
You need to practice this. Yeah, you need to practice this because you, you've, you've learned about it before, but it's, we forget these things. We need, we need regular practice, so it becomes second nature.
Hmm. I will replay the video and we'll listen again and listen again and listen again, listen again.
All right, so you've gone up to forty-two point six. Well done. Um. And you are on your way. Um, yeah. No, that was, it was a good session. I thought it was great because it really highlighted that part of your mind which has been really, really useful to you. It's really protected you. And it was great to see that and the way it's affected your body and the way to release that. So, you know, it was great. It was a great session. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Much love.
All right, see you soon.
Bye, bye.
Take care. Bye for now.
Bye now.